Recreational land. Recreational rural resource land and other parts of the county. That is farmland, that is urban farmland. There's a definite difference up in the Mount Hood corridor from other areas that we might have to do some tweaking. That if we work on the principal river conservation for the RC. The yeah, river stream, RSCA. We are going to have to keep into consideration, I think, some of these protections that it has in a very specific area. Of the Mount Hood area, I mean, you know, these, there's, I'm involved because of planning. It of what was going on and that's, you know, I questioned it and now I'm here still questioning it, which is good. But I want to do it and be productive. So I'm going to ask a lot of questions.
That's great. And I mean, to your question about recreation areas, I might see if Joy or Jennifer have a response to that.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
I guess Joy is not going to jump in with a response.
I was formulating a response, Jennifer. Thinking about the difference between farm and forest zones. That are regulated by statewide planning goals in and of themselves. And rural residential zones that in the Mount Hood area include the term recreational. And so I was thinking about. The difference in that perspective as well as the federal regulations from the, the National Forest. So the Mount Hood area is complex because all of these different zones are colliding and the different regulatory agencies are colliding. However. It, there are areas. In our code that can be clarified for where. Housing development is a potential. And that might be one area, Murph, where we have a line item for specific development related to housing. And then other regulations for other development. So it's something to think about. For sure. And I appreciate your perspective.
Thank you, Joy. I am, yeah, because I am concerned about worker housing and what we call recreational housing. That is being used as second homes or short-term rental homes. There isn't anything specific in our code that prevents building these kinds of developments that I can see. You know, I see them going up and I don't see anything that enforces them from continuing building. I, I really support more worker housing somehow because we have people driving 30 miles for a minimum wage job. And that's, that's not right.
So Murph, are you, you're suggesting that, I guess I want to clarify. You're suggesting that we shouldn't reduce the protections that we have in these. Sensitive areas, I guess, in the mountain, near the mountain. Are you suggesting that we need to adopt more restrictive standards than we currently have? Is that?
I know this isn't the time for that. But the protections that we do have in place and the setbacks, I think are most important. Because of the channel migration, you know, almost every.
Right.
Stream up here is a channel migration stream. Hey, at the beginning of the, you know, just before we started, I mentioned Little Joe Creek had water in it and there were salmon in it. It's acting as a perennial stream. Are there different rules for perennial stream? How close can you build to a perennial stream versus?
Depends on how, yeah, depends on the water. First of all, it depends if, if we knew it was fish bearing. When the maps were adopted and assuming that we did, then there would be a setback and then the setback is based on the stream. Flow, basically, again, based on how it was mapped 30 years ago. And the setbacks are anywhere from 50 to 100, depending upon those, the size essentially.
Exactly. So yes, to protect that, absolutely. I would like to see, I hope that we protect or clear it up. Also, you know, 704 starts off. Section 704 applies to land that is generally within a quarter mile of the mean high water line. Of the Clackamas, Sandy, Salmon, Malala, Pudding, Roaring, Twallington, Zigzag Rivers. Quarter mile. We didn't talk about that tonight. We talked about 100 feet. We talked about 150 feet, but it's right there at the very beginning.
Yeah, it says that, but the thing is there's really no rules for that, but that's not for tonight. But you're right, you want to say that. There just aren't any standards that we apply when you're more than 150 feet from those rivers.
So it's, yeah.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify. And I mean, I guess I just will say, no one has suggested that I know of on either of the staff people working on this or the consultants. That we should adopt reduced setbacks for the streams. I don't think that's on the table. So. I mean, don't quote me, maybe some weird thing will come up, but that's not at the moment, anything that we've really talked seriously about. It's more a matter of. Lots of clarification that's needed and, and this kind of need to be more specific about some of our standards.
Thank you. And I'll probably have more to say at the next meeting about open space managed property.
No doubt.
No doubt.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens.
Just a couple of things in the submit or our write-up tonight. It did say note Senate Bill 83 directs a state fire marshal to create model code for defense, defensible space. I know that our Clackamas Fire Marshal has created, certainly not code, but their recommendations. You know, for especially rural areas for defensible space. There's also the map that keeps getting created and pulled back, which I think has happened about three times now. Are you aware of the, of the fire hazard map? So that was just one comment question. And then my second one, and for the life of me, I just cannot remember. It says clear and objective requirements, one of the areas that will be considered, and it says unincorporated communities. Designated in a county's acknowledged comp plan after December 5 of 94, such as Boring and Beaver Creek. Jennifer, can you remind me? What I, I meant to go into the comp plan and find this, but what was that again? Why'd you say Beaver Creek? No.
So there are, there, yeah, so unincorporated communities, it's like a, I'll call it a construct under state law. Where we're allowed to have more intense development and somewhat smaller lot sizes in certain areas outside urban growth boundaries. And these, I, I always forget how many we have. It's something like 11, but don't quote me. Around the county that are recognized. And when we went through periodic review in the nineties, we did have to re-justify all of our unincorporated communities. Except Damascus, which we didn't do because it was being added to the urban growth boundary. Oh, well, that's worked out so far, but, but it's, it's now urban theoretically. So all the other ones are acknowledged. And so that does include Boring, Beaver Creek, several up at Mount Hood, Redland, Malino, Colton. So that's where you see like the one acre, the RA1 zoning. But some concentrations of like rural commercial or maybe rural industrial, depending on which community. So the, the clear and objective requirements do apply inside those unincorporated community boundaries for housing.
Got it. Makes perfect sense now. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopes?
Yeah, regarding the Mount Hood National Forest, I looked it up. It's 1.1 million acres that's rounded. And my question is, and, and these, I'm trying to clarify what I've always thought that in that 1.1 million acres of Mount Hood National Forest. There is no building houses, no anything. It's just a forest that's protected. There can be some recreational use. But you know, none of what we're talking about is actually in the Mount Hood National Forest, correct?
Um, the second part of what you said, I will say, correct. Nothing that we're talking about tonight really affects the National Forest. Primarily because the county is preempted from regulating federal land in most cases. So the United States government does what they're going to do with the land. We can't tell them no. Obviously, there's legislation that applies. You know, rules that apply to national forests, but they're federal rules. And we're not allowed to go in and impose local zoning requirements for the most part. There are some exceptions when. Federal land is leased to private users. We have a little more control, which they sometimes do, right? But, but for the most part, the federal government isn't going to come to us to determine what, what they can do with that land. So the first part of what you said, as to whether they're required to protect it. I mean, there are uses allowed in federal forests that aren't just recreation or aren't just growing trees. But certainly there are, as I understand it, you know, restrictions in terms of what they can, can and can't do. But I'm not able to really comment on what exactly those limitations are.
But for the most part, within that boundary of National Forest, what we're talking about, our zoning codes is not applicable. Correct? For the most part, right?
Right. For the most part, that's true. I think technically most of the National Forest is zoned TBR. But we don't meaningfully apply it in most cases. There are some exceptions, you know, things like where they will. Lease to like us for a ski resort or something like up around government camp and it's, maybe it's federal land. But there, in some cases, we are able to apply like our local design standards, for instance, if they're going to build. Amenities associated with something like a ski resort or something, but it's, it's pretty limited.
Okay. The reason I thought about it is we were talking about recreational, you know, purposes and that designation. And I thought, well, the Mount Hood skier is recreational, but then there's the forest that, you know, in other words, I was trying to figure out the overlap and just figure all that out.
Yeah, for sure. And there is enabling federal legislation that does allow some of these, what I'll call special uses on federal land, like ski resorts, for example.
Great. Thank you for the explanations.
Commissioner Murphy, you have a comment?
I do. There are 549 homes on federal land that are summer homes. That are subject to building standards of Clackamas County, if I remember right. I don't think they fall under zoning. There is talk of more housing coming on federal land. We'll see.
I know there's been some discussions about at least one site up there about the Forest Service partnering for some kind of workforce housing.
Exactly.
Yeah, I've heard that as well. Hey Kate, if, is this the last slide and would you maybe want to stop sharing so we can, everybody can see everybody?
Yeah. I, I have a few, few thoughts. And thinking, having been a Parks and Open, Open State Advocate early in my, earlier, a long time ago. The whole open space and recreational use component is. Something that it doesn't appear to be very well defined within zoning code. So I think. I mean, I remember dealing with this way back when I first got involved with the park and rec district formation. The question that, that I have is, do our zoning ordinances? Have any means of making sure when developments, particularly for housing, that there are some. Open space recreational considerations that need to apply to those developments in some manner. Or otherwise, if it's all about housing, we're going to have all kinds of houses. But there won't be adequate parks or trails or anything for all the people that need to live. So the question becomes, will this make it even more difficult to try to preserve? Open space, recreational space that could pen, that could potentially be developed for parks and recreational use for people moving into these areas?
No. And I will explain. Currently, because of the state law, we can't enforce our regulations that are not clear and objective.
So there's no opportunity to say. We need to make sure there's some conserv, you know, say you got a huge, huge development. I know it's tough for the small ones. What are you going to set aside? You're not going to sit, be able to set aside anything that's usable. But you know, say you have some huge development that comes in where there, there's, you know, other than they might put up a couple of tot lots. That become outdated within a few years as the kids grow up. It just seems like there's a gap there still. And maybe there's nothing we can do about it. I don't know.
If they develop a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, then we can encourage them to consider. Providing trails or other recreational opportunities inside the open space tract. But there are times where the open space tract is specifically designed to protect steep slopes, water resources and other.
Not necessarily for recreational needs.
Not necessarily for recreational need.
Yeah, I get it. But it still counts as open space.
It does.
Yeah.
And so they can consider trails. And there is a requirement that each lot in the planned unit development is within a certain distance of that open space. But it doesn't require that open space to be used for recreational opportunities of the public or the development.
Our code is never, well, with one exception, which is Sunnyside Village, kind of out your way, Tom.
I know it now.
Yeah. So Sunnyside Village is the only development that I am aware of in Clackamas County that was ever really planned in a way where. All the developments there were, you know, there was a park plan for, the whole thing was greenfields, right? And they planned the whole thing from the ground up. They had, I think, six identified park sites in specific locations. There was a whole like formula for. Developers to contribute to either, some of them had to dedicate the land, others had to then pay into a pot for the development of the park. That's the only example of that that I'm aware of in the county. And so besides that, there's, there's aspirational stuff that we've had in our comp plan and things, but we've never had any requirement. To set aside land specifically for particular park sites or for sort of active type recreation or trails or whatnot. The, there is, of course, the Parks District has an SDC that they charge for, you know, new development then goes to district facilities, but it's not. You know. Specific to necessarily a particular neighborhood that's developing.
Yeah.
Um, so right. So the open space regulations, I mean, Joy is correct. We can't apply them right now to housing because they're not clear and objective. And they were really more targeted at these environmentally sensitive type areas than they were at really recreational opportunities. And, yeah, and unfortunately they're just so old that, and they have, they're written in a way that it's just not, has never been very well understood. So I think probably the biggest. Practical impact of the open space regulations over the years has been that if you have this open space designation on the property and it's over an acre. You are required and you're dividing it, you're required to do that as a PUD. So at least that means that 20% of the site does have to be in this open space tract. And so you're getting some outright preservation in theory of some of these restricted areas. And I think one of the questions that we probably are going to want to look pretty hard at is. Is that really offering much more value than the other regulations we have that already lean toward either preserving those density transfer? All, you know, all the other tools that we already have, or is this truly, and is this truly just redundant?
Well, it's easier to say. Space that has a natural habitat or stream preservation component to it, those are easier to. Apply to a development than, oh, by the way. You know, what about tot lot for the kids or what about a trail to connect to some other trail network? Those are a little trickier. I, I get it, but it, it just, it just dawned on me that. This, it's never been very clear and it's probably not going to get any clearer based, based on what I'm hearing.
And it might be again, something that I think these, we're going to get more of these issues that come up and this parking lot idea. I think it's going to be important to say like, these are the things that's not possible we can get done in the next year. But there may be some noble goals here of things that the planning commission would say to the board, hey, we identified these three or four things that we really think you ought to put on a work program. And have your staff move on, you know, to do something different over time, but not. Right now, it's really more about if we, we've got to clean up the code so we can use the code legally.
I get it. I've just, it's just an observation I want to share. Murph, you're up again.
Okay, thanks. I was, that brings up the question about surface water management is. Is, should Wes be at the table? Don't we, don't some of these areas pay surface water fees? You know, for parking lots and that kind of stuff for the water to be treated?
As the consultant said, we have several different districts that provide surface water management and Wes is definitely one of them. And one of those ideas that the consultant shared was using their regulations as. The regulations that developers have to comply with and having a yes, no. The development meets or does not meet based on the feasibility letter or letter of support from the regulatory authority. So yes.
We're not talking 1200C application. Permit, okay.
One of the things though, before we leave, the last slide that Kate had. Said specifically, is there any information you need from us to help with the discussion next month? Or which is, yeah, just about a month away. So is there any information? So you've had an opportunity to ask your questions. What do you need from us to? Have a, a perspective or an in-depth discussion next month on these questions?
Will we have access to the slides?
Me and the ones we just reviewed?
Will this video be posted?
Yes, but we'll, we'll send you the slides. That was my thought so that you have, you have them.
Well, most of the slides were already.
The slides that, that we, that you covered that said, this is the topic for next month. Those slides, but just obviously more detail and the pros and cons. It's really nice to understand, depending on what direction, what the pro and con is, advantage, disadvantage, that kind of thing. And then being able to bounce it off of planning, is that doable? Is that not? And, you know, if we're not helping the situation, why are we doing it? I mean, well, obviously the state's requiring it, but. So just taking those, I think there were two or three slides about. Just doing housing or more, and then the other slides about what we're going to talk about, just more, more in depth of that. I really liked the layout this month of where we did land, land, landscape. And just really talking about the topic and where we are and then being able to do kind of a options with pros and cons. That's works in my brain. Thank you, Kate.
Well, what, what I would like to see, like I mentioned before, is if you address some of these issues with other counties. Particularly the three counties we've been talking about. What have you come up with for them? So that we can take a look at that and see, is it applicable to us or not?
Okay, good comment. Any other comments? Okay, I guess. We'll see you in a month and have a, probably a really robust conversation. When do we, when we see, I, I suspect there will be, these were just like the, the two-minute highlights of, of what we're going to see. There, there'll be a lot more probably as you dig into it that will be, we'll be seeing. So it could be a fairly. Lengthy meeting depending on how much stuff you, you have to change. That to a statement or? Yeah?
I think that's probably, I think that's probably accurate. Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully you don't have too much else on the agenda next month. And yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for, you know, this is, these are really complicated topics to discuss. I appreciate everyone's willingness to follow along and kind of jump in with your, your questions and your observations and ideas. So looking forward to next month's discussion as well.
Thanks, Kate.
Before we jump off, I was going to say thank you as well. And just clarify, we are not sending. The actual code amendments to you last, next time. So you will not be getting this giant package of track changes yet, soon, but not yet.
Yeah, yeah.
So this was a, a warm-up to, I mean, obviously the, the information in that audit. So hopefully, having had this conversation and going back to that audit.
Yeah.
Thinking about the points that are made there, we're not necessarily going to be sending another big packet of material. But we want to send if it's, we may send a supplemental memo with additional information, for example, on pros and cons. Of some of those questions to kind of expand on that because it sounds like, and, and also the, maybe some a little bit more about what we've learned from other counties. Although, you know, they're still working it out as well. So I don't know that we, we don't have any bottom line there yet, but.
Yeah. Be aligned with theirs. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So maybe it's just a short supplemental memo to go, but the memo that this, the audit memo, we're going to be still spending some more time on that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Right, Kate? Yes. Okay. She can't pick me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
Right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much.
I think we have some minutes to approve.
Yeah, I didn't see any corrections. I'd certainly make a motion to accept them as written.
Do you want, I want to second that? Commissioner Murphy, you second it? Okay. Do I need to do a roll call or can we just do a informal? I have to do a roll call?
A roll call. Yeah, I can do that. Want me to?
Okay. Go for it, since you offered.
All right, I'll do it. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Founds?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopes?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chair Peterson?
Sure, why not? Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, do we have any other business? See a note here about electronic versus paper copies of meeting materials.
Yeah, I wanted to just have a, a brief check-in with folks. Commissioner Stevens had requested. That hard copy packets be mailed. I think if it was maybe more than like 20 pages, you said, you know, kind of anything, if, if there's anything beyond about 20 pages, she'd like to receive a hard copy in the mail. And I think we, you know, we are trying to move more toward electronic, but you don't have that many meetings. I think we can certainly make that happen. What I wanted to find out, is there anybody, because sometimes people literally want no paper. So if you as a commissioner are just, no, I do everything digital. I do not need some packet of materials arriving at my home. You can either let me know that right now, or you can just email Darcy and me and let us know, you know, over the next day or two. But we're otherwise going to move forward with Tammy's suggestion that if it's more than, you know, 20 page, more than 20 pages, we'll send you a hard copy.
That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, I end up printing it off because I really do study it and. I hate doing that on a computer. I really do. Okay, cool. I did have another sort of miscellaneous. On November 18th, there is a CCI Zoom meeting. And it has to do with planning staff about protecting neighborhood livability. Jennifer, can you, because somebody said to me, oh, this is about ZDO 290. And I said. What? No, it can't be. But will you elaborate for us?
Question. Sure. I'm sorry, Karen and I are both laughing. She's just being a little more polite about it than I am. So this has morphed into far more than I ever understood it was going to be. Let's start with that. So apparently, as I understand it, the CCI, which for those of you who maybe don't know, is the Committee for Community Involvement. And that's existed at the county for decades. It is the body that, under statewide planning goal one, is essentially responsible for kind of thinking about. Or recommending improvement in the way that the county interfaces with the community. And a lot of it is about land use. It isn't only about land use, but a lot of it is about land use. That committee is not staffed by planning. It's not even staffed by the department. That committee is not staffed by planning. It's not even staffed by the department that planning is part of. It's staffed by Public and Government Affairs. Um, so our involvement, I don't know, since I've been planning director, I think I've been to their meetings a couple, you know, so it feels like about once every three years, I get invited to come there and talk about something. So Karen and I were asked um a couple of months ago if we would come to the CCI meeting because they wanted, they had been having some discussions about the concept of livability. And they wanted Karen and I to come and talk to them about that. So we said, sure, we're happy to do that. And we suggested that um the PGA, that staff that you know, supports that committee, ask the committee a little bit more about sort of, well, when you say livability, what do you mean? So we could have some idea and be prepared, right? What kind of questions are we gonna get, just so we could sort of think about it ahead of time? Um, and so apparently somehow from there, there's been this big public outreach, which is fine. Um, letting like all the CPOs know and the Hamlets and all of this, that there's going to be this discussion. And so I think most folks are just gonna end up being in the audience of this webinar.
Right.
Um, and the CCI is actually like, you know, on the screen like the Planning Commission is right now. Um, but Karen and I are not preparing a presentation. We're not there to talk about any particular zoning code amendment package, nothing that's officially on our work program. We are there by invitation from the CCI, basically to hear what they have to say and to respond to their questions. Um, they have been gathering some feedback from apparently CPO members, Hamlet members, anybody who kind of wanted to send something in and say what they thought livability was. Um, we've seen the first round of comments. It's um, I think it's safe to say it's very broad. There, there's a lot on the list that people would like to talk about, which is fine. Um, but so much of it is, you know, some of it is outside the scope of planning. Um, it's all very interesting, but there's just nothing, I'm a little worried now that expectations might be um, a little bit higher than what we can realistically hope.
And I mean, I've literally heard from a CPO saying that it was, as I said, about ZDO two ninety and what did I know? And I said, well, first of all, that that makes absolutely no sense.
Right.
And so I I don't think that's what it's about. And the the broad term livability was like, well, what do you think it's about? Oh, it's about livability. Well, okay, so I was really curious what you and Karen were thinking. But I I mean, I'm gonna find it fascinating. I'm I'm really gonna be finding, because they do have like an email that you can click on if you want to send a question or comment. So that's probably where you're getting some of this stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know exactly how this is gonna run. I mean, there's no way, just the list that I've seen, there's no way that Karen and I could address them in two hours, even if we tried. So I think they're gonna obviously have to tailor to some extent, you know, what is it that the committee really wants to focus on? But um, but it's, yeah, and and I'm not surprised. I mean, that's just that that it's interesting. Let me put it this way. Related to ZDO two ninety, I guess I will say that's not what this is about, but there is an intersection there, which is this idea that you're going to, because I think the committee was interested in maybe adopting like a definition of livability that could be applied as part of land use. That was the first thing that Karen and I heard from them. And as you, you know, livability is not clear and objective. And so, so there is this intersection of, we can't, you know, we're moving away from these sort of subjective values laden kinds of terms in regulating housing because we can't legally do that. And so what I was hoping for is that we get some con, you know, when you say livability, what does that mean to you in con- in concrete terms? Does that mean you want houses ten feet from your property line? Does it mean you don't want anybody to have a house taller than yours? Does it mean you want them to save every tree that's bigger than X? Does it mean traffic? Does it, you know, what does it mean?
It means all that. I mean, yeah, affordable, five thousand square foot house.
Right, that's what everybody wants.
It's all of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So you've got to be able to distill it into regulations that we would actually be able to apply um in this new world. And so some of this is just gonna kind of have to be that discussion of Karen and I sort of explaining that there are these parameters now that have been placed on us by the state. And some of this advocacy about livability is probably gonna need to take place at a higher level than us. Um, and I think there's been the concern, and I don't mean the board, I mean at the state. Um, and the other thing is, I know they've had some concerns, CCI has had some concerns about um perceived, well, I think it's real, but perceived rollbacks of um community involvement in the land use planning process. And it's true. I mean, state legislation is narrowing the circumstances under which our planning is even allowed to send notice. It is narrowing opportunities for appeal. You know, that has been happening over the last several years and continues to kind of chip away here and there at that. Um, so.
And now that is um an active discussion. I mean, since the state's land use rule number one is citizen involvement, it kind of flies in the face of their own um rules. So, yeah, it's that 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 is definitely have a big, big conversation I'm hearing quite consistently. And I mean, ninety-nine percent of CCI's focus is CPOs and Hamlets, even though they support all of the advisory boards and commissions. That's really who comes at them as far as uh input and questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. That that makes so much more sense, sort of. I mean, it'll be interesting to watch you two going, oh, okay. Here we go.
Well, it's gonna, the meeting's gonna be much more interesting than I think I figured it was gonna be in like much more. It's just morphed into something that's much bigger than I had expected, which is fine. I can roll with it. I just always feel bad if I disappoint people. And it's a little bit like, I feel like maybe everybody thinks this is more than what it's gonna be, but.
Yeah, I was so curious. Thank you.
Have a conversation.
Appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you on the.
I guess I won't see you if you're in the audience, but.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so schedule. What was that for?
You said, is there something else you wanted to share?
Just schedule review. Um, no, I don't have anything else. Alright, so you've got a public hearing two weeks from tonight. Um, packages are going out a week from today. Um, Martha Fritzy has a comp plan amendment and zone change, and unless I've mixed them up, this is the one that it's an urban application related to the Rose Villa um facility there, River Road. So, um, I don't, I don't remember the specifics if I knew what they were for this particular application, but um, but that's the one. So she'll be, she'll be presenting that on the twenty-fourth. And then the next study session for the item from tonight is December eighth. And then December twenty-second is canceled, and that will be it for the year. Um, we do already know that we have another comp plan amendment and zone change for the second meeting in January. So that has been set for sure. It's not on the written materials that Darcy sent, but.
I will be away on January fourteen through twenty-eight, so um I will not be. So I'll let Darcy know that probably will not be in the second one.
So, so in terms of uh all these other uh we had several different study sessions on other topics, uh, when will we have a sense of when the follow-up uh sessions will be for some of these other topics or they're out there as well? Do you have that mapped out yet, or is that more, we'll learn more in the coming, coming months?
We don't have anything else scheduled for sure. I mean, we know Joy's gonna need a couple more dates in the spring-ish, late winter, early spring, I guess, on this project that we talked about tonight. Um, the ZDO diagnostic report is sort of chugging along. I don't think, we don't know, is that Karen, we don't have anything firm yet on when we would be coming back to the Planning Commission with that?
Um, you know, I think that um as soon as we would come back would be February, maybe March, depending on, um, we're hoping that it'll end up actually wrapping up in that um, March-April timeframe. So it may be that we just come back with, and this is what we've learned, and this is what the report includes.
Okay, right. And then we would be moving into code amendments, but that's a subsequent phase. Right now, we're just in the report phase. The other thing that's percolating is another minor, those of you who have been around a bit, remember we do these minor in time sensitive amendment packages? We didn't do one last, this last fiscal year. Um, so it's been going on two years, I think, since we had one. So uh we are planning to do a package. Um, it is starting to come together what might be on the list. We are going, we tentatively are gonna talk to the board about that on the second of December. I'm hoping that that date sticks. Um, if it does, then we should have a green light from them on some scope for whatever is gonna be in that package. And so then we would definitely come to you with a study session just to go over all the items before uh before a public hearing. But the goal is to have that adopted by June thirtieth. So it will be coming to you, probably, you know, a policy session, or excuse me, a study session and a public hearing sometime in the first six months of next year.
Okay, all right. Well, I have a little busier here than we've had in recent years.
You will, yes, yes.
Okay, well, anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Okay, well, I guess we'll adjourn the meeting. We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Hi.
Night.
Thank you.